Welcome to the June 11th, 2019 Town of East Hampton zoning Board of Appeals meeting. This evening, we have a work session, so we'll get started right away with some extensions of time. The first one is De Manille. And Board members, you recall, we discussed this at last week's meeting. This is in, I'll hand this off to, this is in Board Member Brenneman's. Tim, if you would, please.
Yes, you'll recall, we talked about this last week. It's an extension of time for Adelaide De Manille at 43 Mile Hill Road in East Hampton, Suffolk County Tax Map 300-72-1-2. And this is an extension of time request to maintain a building permit, and so I make a motion to approve the extension of time in this matter.
Concur.
Concur.
And I concur. Thank you, Tim. Okay, next Board members, we have, on the agenda, we have Mansley, and that was denied, so there's no action required there. And as well-
I'll actually-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll have those ready for you to sign this week.
To sign, okay, great. Oh, yes, thank you. Thanks Denise. Pardon me, and the same, Denise, correct with O'Hare? That's-
Yeah, same.
That next week?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to possible admin, administrative applications, and Lenny from the Planning Department will walk us through this one. I'll read it in briefly. This one is, do you need something? Oh, thank you. I'll sign this first. Thanks, thanks, Joan. Denise, thank you. Okay, so this one is, the applicant here is Soria, and it's, I don't have the number, Castle Court. Lenny, what number do you have there for that?
Six, thank you. Six, Castle Court, Namagansett, Tax Map number 300-152-28.3. Description is to replace in kind existing first and second story decking and footings located within 100 feet of a wetland, and to construct a new front entry with stairs to relocate an existing pool heater, and to relocate an existing outdoor shower within NRSP jurisdiction. If you would, Lenny, thanks.
So, the first and second story-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Deck is here. They're just replacing it in place in kind. It's legally pre-existing. They're moving the pool heater from here to be actually outside the 100 feet setback, so it'll be, it's improving its location. And then they're moving the shower from over here to actually the other side of the house, and they're rebuilding their front porch here, which is within NRSP jurisdiction, but it's more than 100 feet from the wetlands.
And is the outdoor shower, does it have a drywall?
Is that improving too, or?
The outdoor shower, it does not have a drywall.
But you will get one?
I could show Joan for a second, the survey down here, too. Thanks.
So it's moving it further away from the wetlands.
So here's the replacing kind decking. That's the new front porch. The shower's been relocated over to here, I believe it was, right?
Moving the shower?
They're moving, yeah. I'll show you, I'll pass this around.
Make a condition that they put a drywall, do it to a drywall.
Yep, I would agree with that.
I agree with that. This is in my Namagansett district, so I would make a motion with regard to Soria at Six Castle Court in Namagansett, that this be processed administratively. Now, a second?
Second.
Concur.
Concur.
Thank you all. Thank you, Lenny. Okay, let's move on to board determinations. Board members, I'd like to table Young and Lemieux for this week, if that's okay with you all?
May we.
May we, Lemieux, the better, right? It's the only thing I can say correctly. With regard to the next on our agenda, Sinawi, I recuse myself. Do you have business to finish up on this, this week?
I think, yeah, I think we approved it.
Yeah, we approved it last week.
Okay.
So the town attorneys have that.
Okay, thank you Denise. So we'll move forward to our board decisions. Granby Ariel, the public hearing here was 4:16, and again, Board members, I'd like to table this. The town attorneys are looking into some issues here for us, if that's okay with you all to table that?
Can, can I just?
I think you might want to just hold, I know you and I discussed, you had a question, but I think it might be better just to hold off until the discussion, Joan, until we discuss it.
Well, there's a specific question I want to ask the attorney's office.
Which you, you can do any time.
Which is the status of the Supreme Court challenge to the board's determination.
Right, right. I just don't know if we want to get into that now, since we're not discussing it?
Yeah, we'll do it.
We'll do it when we-
Yeah, just, will they look into it and let us know?
I can tell you, can I?
And we're going to do an exec session afterwards where you can always-
Okay.
But I don't mean to, it's just that, not to cut you off, it's just that, you know, I don't want to partially start a discussion when we're not even dealing with it this week, okay? Thank you. Okay, next Board members, I think we're all prepared for the next few Board members, correct, or maybe?
Yes.
So we'll get going first with 22 Cleveland LLC, and I'll read that in, and then ask Terry to lead us off on that, as it is in her Montauk district. So, this hearing, Board members, was April 30th, 2019. The applicant, 22 Cleveland Drive LLC, you may recall, this is the meeting we had at the firehouse. Lot size and location, 17,999 square feet at 22 Cleveland Drive in Montauk, Tax Map number 300-67-4-19. Description is to allow residents to remain with no interior access to all rooms within the first story. The relief sought is one variance from 255-11-67A3 is required for this application to allow the exterior access to be the only means of access to the east wing of the first story and any other relief necessary. The zoning district here is an A residence zone, the flood zone is X, and the secret class is type two. And I'll pull out the survey, and I have the whole file here, Board members, if you need anything. And Terry, if you could lead us off, please, when you have time, when you're ready. Thank you.
I have to verify the survey date. I have November 29th, 2018.
Okay, let's see what I, let's go to the top of the pile here, see what I have. Yes, I have November 29th, 2018, update topo, and the revision date. I think that's, anyone have a newer one in their file? I think that's-
I think that's the latest, but they gave us at the meeting, we're building plans for the different options that they presented.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
These were the night of the meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, and Board members, we have these ones from the night of the meeting here. I'll put them on the set out there. If anyone needs to look at that, okay.
So this is, you recall, a rather, me, it's a rather unusual property. There's two, two front yards, it fronts both Cleveland Drive and Taft Drive. The address is Cleveland Drive, and the house is laid out, has the, as it states, the west wing and an east wing. The west wing consists of basically bedrooms, and the east wing is where it's a, what do they call it, an upside-down house. The kitchen is up on the second floor of the east wing along with the main master bedroom area. And the problem is that there, there is no, as it states, exterior, only exterior access, rather, to the first floor of the east wing from the west wing, and anywhere else. So, according to the town code, it must have an interior access, and the applicant laid out three different, their architects and agents laid out three different options that they had to possibly rectify the problem, none of which they really preferred, and all of which were, were quite expensive, to change the view and other items. The other thing with this property, it's only, as it exists today, it's only five feet under the maximum GFA allowable. So some, one of the options to add some of the, the construction and redo it would increase their GFA, and they would end up having to get a variance for GFA, as opposed to the access. I was, I was originally concerned about it for a matter of safety, but as stated at the hearing, the agent did confirm that all, that the house as it exists today does meet all of the New York State requirements for building and construction and safety, fire, all that. So, rather, and I think the GFA, having the applicant, the benefit to the applicant at this point in time is, you know, is more, is better than the negative impact for the town or the neighborhood as a whole. Some of the other options, might have changed the view a little bit for a neighbor, but nothing significant. But, so I'm looking to approve this, this access, and the one thing that did come up at the hearing is, their fencing seems to be along the property line on all four sides of the property, and it exceeds eight feet. So, the applicant did agree to a couple of things. Number one, well, as far as the fencing, they would check into whether it is legal already, and if not, do what they need to do to make it legal, either shorten the fence or go to the ARB, because they, they do have it on both front, front yards. It's eight feet also. The other thing that they're willing to do, part of this on the ground floor, it's a little strange layout, but they have what they call an outdoor kitchen, but it has no outdoor cooking facilities or refrigeration units or anything. It's just a table and some cabinets and things to mostly serve and have food eaten there. It was, we didn't get a view of the inside. They have sliding doors on the south side of the house, which give access into that, that kitchen. And it is covered, so it's, again, a rather unusual feature. But they are willing to covenant that the outdoor kitchen and that, in general, there will be no second kitchen added to this house ever. So, with the covenant, and with the, you know, the looking into the fencing, and the fact that it does meet the New York State standards, I'm looking to approve this.
I'd-
Thank you. Go ahead, Joan.
Thank you. I'd want to add, just to elaborate on two things, because, one, they covenanted not to enclose the outdoor kitchen, but they also proposed in their last filing that they covenanted that no kitchen would be installed in any portion of the first wing, and it would not, the first wing would not be used by anyone but family, guests, or staff, because we were concerned that they might turn it into a-
An apartment or something.
Right.
Apartment or something, right. So, I guess with the, those two covenants, I, I don't see why we shouldn't approve it. I mean, it's unusual, but the Building Department initially approved the plans, and it was only discovered on the CO inspection, so it wasn't like they intentionally created the problem.
Right, right, you're right. Did several inspections.
Okay, thank you, Joan. Tim, one thing?
Sure. Well, I'm in large part in agreement with our, my fellow members here. The applicant referred to this as a mutual mistake, where plans in the Building Department failed to recognize the admission of a separate entrance. They did go to fairly elaborate means to demonstrate that the alternatives that they could come up with, exterior and interior modifications to retrofit an entrance, would be fairly both costly and, I think, impactful to the overall design and layout of the home. Of course, the main concern, as Joan just mentioned, is that they could potentially create a separate wing here and rent it as a separate apartment. And the offer of the covenant, my only comment about that is, I would like to really be careful about our wording on exactly what it is that we would ask of them. You know, to the point where I think we have to define what a kitchen is, not just use the word kitchen. And, you know, so I'm not sure that the language that was sort of thrown around was, was appropriate, legal-
Right.
-language, but the gist of it I was supportive of. And I guess, my, my only question about this, and it's kind of a pragmatic one, but once something like, like this is approved, is there any mechanism to check and/or validate that, in fact, the property is being used as approved by the zoning board?
I, I think it's a good question. I don't, I don't believe there is, unless maybe there was a complaint. Go ahead, counsel.
Are you saying, is there like an inspection?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
I think that does, you know, something similar to applies to art of city.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I don't think there is.
All right. I mean, I, that would make me feel totally comfortable.
Run into privacy rights, and there's, I mean, you don't want to go down there.
I understand you, I understand your point.
The covenant goes with the title, so if they did do a modification and then tried to transfer title, they'd have to undo it in order to transfer title. I don't know if that's solace, but-
Well, the person could take it.
If there was an updated C of.
Yeah.
But going to the definition of a kitchen, that, that's interesting, is they did clearly state that the outdoor, what they're calling the outdoor kitchen, even though we couldn't see it.
I think a kitchen is defined by code.
Yeah.
Defined by code, for cooking facilities and refrigeration facilities.
The board needs to decide if they want to use the definition as the Building Department says is, is a kitchen, or if they want to, if the board wants their own definition of kitchen.
No, no, the bottom. I'm, I'm okay as long as it's clearly defined. I don't know exactly what that definition is.
I don't want to redefine it.
But I wouldn't want to redefine.
I don't know if it's, if it's actually in the code, or if it's in a policy defined by the-
Well, it's not in the zoning code.
Well, even if we could-
No, I don't know if it would be, it would be in the building code.
Stated in longhand exactly what it, what it is defined as. I don't want to be making it up on my own.
Well, obviously, I mean-
Go ahead.
Or, maybe I'll segue into it. I believe, I think that, there are a few defining factors here. One is that the house does comply to New York State Building Code and National Building Code. The code that we're referring to is, is a, is a local code. It is important, I thought it was important, that the applicant did, did say that they had, not only did the Building Department approve the, the building permit, but they had consulted with the Building Department leading up to the building permit, and I think that was an important part factor, from, from a uniqueness standpoint. So, it's just a miss from all sides. So I think, I think to, to solidify this in a covenant kind of is a key factor here.
Well, and also to make it unique, to, to emphasize in the facts that the Building Department missed it the first time.
Right. It's a miss on all sides, and I think it was a legitimate miss. But, but again, I think the covenant-
Right, right. So I'll just add, basically, I agree with all of the comments I've heard from you all this evening. And I think, I think when there's a miss like this, I think the building inspectors will be looking more carefully at this, but as Roy knows, there's a foundation inspection, a framing inspection, electrical inspection, a plumbing inspection, insulation inspection, so there's a lot of inspections, so that take place when you're building a house like this. And as, I, I agree with you with regard to the covenants, and, and, and I trust in Beth wordsmithing the determination with regard to your point, Tim, I think it's a very good point. And the applicants did say, you know, you can, a house such as this, not that this is maybe that pertinent, but you can see where they're probably not looking out to rent this thing, when it's a family house and it's a brand-new house, I don't know where it is, you know, so. Otherwise, I would, I agree with you all, and I'd be moving towards approving this application.
Now, the permit would be conditioned on both the fencing being addressed-
Oh, yes, I'm good with that. We, I think we're all good with that.
And the covenant being submitted in advance, right?
Right, right. The, kind of the two covenants, right? One on the, on the apartment and one on the kitchen. And they, and I'll make note for the record in the plans, they do show in that outdoor kitchen that was closed, those are slatted doors, kind of breathing barn doors that open up to make it kind of an outdoor kitchen. And there is, it looks like a bar sink, and I'm sure there, they're allowed to have an undercounter refrigerator like you can anywhere, you know, they got on a deck or something like that. It looks like that's probably what they have there. Okay. We good on that, Beth?
Mm-hmm.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Board members. Okay. Okay, next we have Robert and Donna Pelicano. Lot size and location, this is 10,000 square feet at 78 Maidstone Drive, map number 1203. Lots 30-34 in Namagansett, Tax Map number 300-176-7-8. Description is to renovate 1,052.71 square feet of an existing second story to become livable space, add a second story overhang, and extend a brick walkway to the front door on a parcel of land containing dune land. Also to allow an existing outdoor shower to persist 137.2 feet from a wetland on a parcel containing dune land. The relief sought here is a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255-4-20 of the town code and a variance from maximum gross floor area, GFA 255-11-10. The applicant requests a variance of 103.51 square feet to renovate an existing residence to be 2,703.51 square feet where a maximum GFA allowed on a parcel of this size is 2,600 square feet and any other relief necessary. This is in a B residence zone, flood zone is AE, elevation 15, and secret class is type two. And I just want to pull out the documents here. This is in my Namagansett district, so I'll start us off here. And, Board members, I have the photographs here, the site photo, photos here. Take a look at those. There's also the photo here that I think is important, that shows the spaces up there, a typical spacing there, raising the roof. I'll say in short, basically, I'm moving, I'm, I'm leaning towards approving this application. It does go over the GFA. I, I just felt that the applicants and the architects sort of showed the difficulty in, and what they're trying to do in, in meeting and knocking that portion of it off, because of their, the way they're sitting this, you know, right on the existing roof. They're kind of working with what's, what's there. Just want to pull the survey out here. And in the Planning Department memo, they also, they, they do recognize that the proposed renovations in additions to the residence will have a minimal impact on the sense of dune land present in this area. It does seem like they, and again, I, I agree with all of their mitigations here with regard to the establish, the board, with regard to any-
Prohibition.
Turf lawn and prohibition of turf lawn. And I wanted to ask you all to remind me where we got with a revegeta, with the vegetation at that public hearing. I was unsure if they had offered.
She had offered-
It seemed like we were, it seemed like they were offering this edge of clearing to make-
She had no idea that there needed to be revegetation, and she said she'd be back there, and she'd be okay with-
Well, thank you, your notes, thank you.
Revegetating.
Yeah, I thought there was. Yeah, I thought there was. And, go ahead.
Also, no objection to adding the drywall under the shower.
Right, right.
Right. The, the one thing that isn't clear from my notes, you had questioned whether a new septic system, one of the new IA septic systems was needed, because the cost may exceed 50%.
Yes.
And there was a reply that because it's the owner, and the owner's going to be the contractor, the cost won't be anywhere near 50% the valuation of the property. So, I don't know if that's a good reason or a bad reason not to recommend a new IA system.
I think, yeah, I, I, thank you for your notes there, Joan.
But they're not changing the number of bedrooms.
I know. I think we were trying, I was trying to kind of see, or kind of, if they would offer that sort of thing, and I don't know if we could tie this one in to a neck, you know, the nexus between requiring that. Some, I was sort of hoping they might consider it.
Yeah.
This system went in, I'm trying to see when the first, it's a fairly, it, it goes into, yeah, this might have gone, gone in fairly recently, this system here, so, and it's not changing the number of bedrooms. It's, and again, I think that revegetation is important, what, what they're offering. I believe they were doing basically the back here of the, I think we went-
You're looking at the February 12th, 2019 updated proposal?
Yes, yes, and I think they were willing to go along the side of the wetland side there, correct? The continuous, the one, the whole property line there, right up to the shed there, which is like 10.6 feet up to the shed off the property line.
And then we have the town hall survey. Is it February 12th?
It's the revision date, February 12th. I have another one here, if you'd like, Terry.
Yeah.
You want to take a look?
Yeah.
There you go. Yeah. Let's see, so I'll move along, that's, that's, those are my, my thoughts on this. I'll, I'll move it along to, who would like to take a pass next to this? Joan, would you like to?
Well, I already butted in.
Okay. That's all right. You can add some more comments, if you'd like. I'm glad you butted in.
I, I guess, I was wondering if we could urge them to install a new IA system.
I don't think we can compel.
But we can't compel them.
But I think that's a mechanism that the building inspector oversees, as far as verification of cost of history.
Yeah. Okay.
We certainly tried, though. We certainly tried.
Right?
Yeah, so, otherwise, I, I agree with John.
Okay, thank you. Terry, you want to?
Yeah, well, I, I agree also with my colleagues, but I think there was a question about the revegetation. I think what that stemmed from is that there was a determination back in 2004, which also stipulated that there would be revegetation done that apparently was not done.
Was not, and she didn't, yes.
So, under the project conditions for this application, they, it would be that the revegetation, plus with the original revegetation from that, that determination.
So in other words, to come into compliance with 2004?
Compliance with it. Plus, whatever they disturbed on this application.
And plus what they offered at the, at the- And plus what they offered at the, at the meeting, they offered to revisitate between the structures.
That's a really good point.
Yeah, and they, between the structures, the southern, I'm sorry, I want to look at my other survey again, make sure I have the right one. Oh, thank you, thanks.
Yeah.
Between the southern property line, I believe it's 10 foot six to the shed, and they have a brick patio on the other side, and I believe they were going to run that, as I recall, they were going to run that swath the whole, along the whole 79 foot.
Make a suggestion that we request the revegetation occurred prior to the issue of the building permit?
Yes.
And then that edge of clearing becomes the construction limiting.
Exactly, and that way.
That's the whole thing, is clarifying where there's a construction limiting.
Yeah, exactly, and that way the planning department sees with it, we, I think that's, I completely agree. And plus, I'd like to make sure we include all of the mitigation in, I think it's Tyler's memo, was it? In Tyler's memo, the project recommended, which is the.
But Tyler didn't recommend. Well, whoever.
I'm looking at the TAM here, the TAM was by Tyler.
No, it was Alani.
Oh, my, 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 my mistake. Said TY, I said type 2. Sorry, Alani, sorry for that.
The thing that Terry's pointing out is that the project conditions that were provided don't specifically call out that they should specifically comply with the 2004 vegetation.
Oh, no, I agree. In addition, we want, in addition to all of.
Yeah, we're going to add that.
Let's just clean that up real quick, because the TAM says it was 2005, that it came before the ZBA, and that's when they put on that second story. It does not say in the TAM that there was a revegetation component of that, so I suspect that we should probably start by looking at that.
Yes.
Determination, just to confirm exactly what was in there before we ask that it comply with.
Sure. Counsel, could you do that when you're reviewing it? Could you just take a look at that when you're writing your determination?
Well, in the.
And make sure we include that if it is, because that's, Tim says it may not be there.
It's item number three in the 2005 determination. Number three. Should be revegetated in accordance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Maybe we should just go by the survey.
In 2005, also, it said turf and lawn is allowed, so we're changing that.
We're changing that, right.
That it's not, yeah. But that's in the TAM.
Right, and then we're adding what we've added, and we're going along with the other.
Right, plus the original revegetation that's not done.
Right.
All right, so for the record, I'm in agreement with the board on this. This is NRSP, and then a very modest 137-foot variance. Actually.
130.
13.51.
Variance. And NRSP, we're mostly concerned with both the dune land and the wetland in this property, and nothing as proposed would have any impact, I think negatively, on those things that we're trying to protect here. So I'm, I do believe that this fits the standards.
Thank you, Tim. And I will add, before I, if you have any comments. We do have about four, four letters from neighbors not opposing this application for the record. Go ahead, Roy, please.
So the point of clarification is that although this board often frowns upon a GFA variance, it should be noted that the, prior to the code, the recent GFA revision in the code, this would not, this would have complied. That doesn't mean that we still don't frown upon it, but I think from a, as our other members have said, it meets all, it meets the standards because it's a minimum variance. But I just think from an NRSP standpoint, the revegetation is a fair, is adequate mitigation.
And remember.
It was also done on the second floor where they're.
They had the small bedrooms that were created after, before the code was revised, so now the bedrooms on the second floor don't comply with code minimum bedroom square footage.
Yeah.
I agree, it's going to be a safer situation.
Yes, yeah. Good. You good, Terry? Terry, any comments? Anyone else want to add, or we?
No, Beth.
Yeah, good. Okay, good discussion. Thank, thank you all for chiming in there. Great. Counsel, are you good, eh? Okay, next we have Sokolyn. I'll read this in. And then ask board member Berger to lead us off, as this is in Montauk. The applicant here is David Sokolyn. Lot size and location, 57,787 square feet at 91 Surfside, map of Surfside Estates, file 718-1949, Montauk. Tax map number 300-51-3-6. Description is to construct a 405-square-foot swimming pool with 395 square feet of decking to allow a spiral staircase to remain and install an upgraded sanitary system on a parcel of land containing wetlands. The release sought here is a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255-4-20 of the town code, and four variances are required for this application. Four variances of 29 feet, 29 feet, 23 feet, and 18 feet from 255-4-30 wetland setbacks of the town code are required to allow the existing spiral staircase to remain 71 feet, construct the proposed pool equipment 71 feet, proposed deck 77 feet, and proposed swimming pool 82 feet from freshwater wetlands where 100-foot setbacks are required and any other relief necessary. This is in a B residence zone, the flood zone is X, and the secret class is type 2. And Terry, if you would lead us off, please.
Thank you for saying that. I'm still a little confused, so I'm looking at this and this is. Originally, so this was to construct the pool and the decking. Right off the bat, as far as the variances, 29 for the spiral staircase. Yes, it's existing, they're not changing anything, so I am okay with the variance for that. So it can remain 71 feet from the wetlands. The pool equipment will be located in that area possibly. I'm okay with that also, I think it's pretty much the minimum variance necessary. The deck will be 77 feet from the wetlands, and the swimming pool 82 feet. Now, initially, after the hearing, I really was against the swimming pool. But in looking at it, one of the things that the applicant, the applicant is offering, the current sanitary system is located on the property where the swimming pool is proposed to go. So they are going to put in an updated IA sanitary system, which in and of itself might not make me approve the pool. However, I think also with the, the construction on this and the upgrades, that the applicant is coming very close to their maximum GFA for this property, so the property would be pretty much maxed out. And with that, this might be the only opportunity to get an IA system put in on this property, ever. So I've actually changed my mind on that, and I am looking to approve it now. Now, there was a lot of discussion we had about retaining walls, and that's what can use them, because I'm still not clear on where we ended up. I know the retaining wall down on the, near the Surfside Avenue side was going to be shorter, and it was going to enable the applicant to do some other things, including they agreed to move the pool, to shorten the pool in order to accommodate the.
What I remember about the retaining wall is because of the health department changed their regulations from separation with the IA system, John. They changed it from a 10-feet separation to 5 feet, which allowed, from the contouring of the property, allowed the retaining walls to come in.
Four feet.
Therefore, shortening them, I think, where there's 3 feet.
Four feet.
Well, my notes, I'm so glad you said that, because I have, if a retaining wall, they could move it four feet from the property line and then add screening in front of it.
I believe it was going to be 3 feet high, but still, 3 feet high would still exceed the 30-inch.
They would move. Now I'm, now I'm. Something was being moved four feet in to allow for screening?
That was the retaining wall, I thought, down by, near the street.
That's what I was confused.
So I think we should stipulate that we should require a screening along that retaining wall.
Now, the plan I have from, in front of me, with the sanitary from TF Engineering, has the correct, as Roy knows, you need 20, and many of you know, you all know.
20 feet separation to the.
You need 20 feet separation, and you need 10, 10 feet and 10 feet, and right now they're showing it. And if they were to move this wall in, the 4 feet, I don't know how they'd get that.
Well, I don't know if they were moving the wall in, if they were going to move the pool.
Isn't it going to be redesigned?
Yeah, there was a question that I think Joel, who was the agent, they weren't quite sure exactly what they could do with the final.
So if.
Now, we're looking at the septic site plan that's dated.
Have to go back to the county.
March 18th. Is that what you're looking at, John?
Let's see. Oh, let's see, I'm looking at, well, this TF Engineering.
There's a septic site plan that we got, yeah.
Yes, I think that's probably what I'm looking at, yes, that's.
March 18th, 2019. And then we got a survey also.
I have April 11, no, that's April 11, 2018. This might be an early one. Let me see if there's a more current one here.
Yeah, I have a more current one.
Let's see what a survey here is. On the, the survey I have.
And they also gave us a survey that night, I believe.
Let me just see the last revised date here from the survey. So I have revised current engineer site plan 4. It's very small typing, 4-1-19, is that the survey I have? That's very current, that's April 1st. You all have that one?
4-3.
Is that a 3?
I think it's a 3, yeah. It is very small.
I have one stamped, received April 17th.
Yes, that's the same one, yeah, and here's the revised date is.
I can't read the.
So, Roy, I have one here for you, man. Oh, and then.
He shares.
Oh, and then, I'm sorry, and now I do, thank you, Terry, now I do have, I believe this may be the revised. Yeah, the sanitation plan.
Very tiny. And I believe Joel said that they're still not sure if it were approved that they could do the 4-foot, the retaining wall with the screening. They did say they would do that, and they would shorten the pool.
Yeah, I mean, they have.
Okay, and that's what you were.
Shorten the pool about four or five feet.
In order to move the system in?
Yeah.
They had, they have on here, line of planted cedars in the TAM. So, is that the proposed screening? I thought the screening was going on this side of the proposed concrete retaining wall.
Yeah, Surfside Avenue.
Right, okay.
Right. And also, in the TAM, go ahead.
Area over the proposed sanitary slated to be revegetated after the installation of the sanitary. No plan has yet been submitted.
So we can condition that.
Supplied serving, the framed storage bin located over the, well, it's supposed to be removed, and I believe it already.
Yeah, the old retaining wall is going to be removed, the existing one, the rounded, the round, curved one. Yes, I think that was the issue in the hearing, right, was, oh, I'm sorry, I'm kind of jumping in here. Terry, go ahead.
No, no, that's, it's the detail that Joel was saying about the retaining wall that threw me, and this. I believe this was, was this April 30th, or so, this hearing?
It was.
Yes, yes. April 30th.
The hearing was April, that's from when we were in St.
The original, we have January 8th, 2019, that might have been the original hearing.
What?
On the meeting notice here, the original one, but that goes way back.
No, it was April, it was April 30th when we were up at the.
With the fire emergency.
No, I'm just saying, the original here is on the January 8th, 2019 hearing notice, but we must have kept it open, I think we kept it open at this extent.
No, no, the hearing was April 30th.
Yeah, the hearing was April 30th. This is not, doesn't appear to be an updated notice in there.
Oh, okay.
The meeting was April 30th.
Okay, yeah, yes. Okay.
So I'm just not sure how we.
Well, my other note says.
A little bit not specific as to what they could do.
With the pool, it's, my other note said that the pool is going to be 15 by 23, and they'll move it back and to the, move back.
They're going to move it back to, actually, cut it off at the end that's farthest away from the wetland.
Right, right.
So it wasn't going to change the variance.
At the sanitary end, yes.
At the sanitary end.
Yeah, so the variance would be the same.
I think we would condition it on a revised survey and on a vegetation plan, right?
Yes, and possibly an updated septic plan if it.
Well, they'd have to at least revise, yeah, they would have to revise the survey to show that, and then they would go back, then they could go back to the county with their revised plan and get that.
Yeah.
You know? Yeah, so we'd have.
We have to do that, I mean, and they weren't sure either.
Well, you're right, it's actually true, Terry, pardon me, I agree with you, it's true, there's a survey, and we might as well have the TF Engineering, because that's going to go, yeah, that's going to go to the, they need to do that anyway, so we have them both updated.
Right, and both are pertinent to the whole project.
They sure are, yeah, they sure are, yeah.
And one of the project conditions sort of says that, because it goes on to say the clearing and vegetation, blah, 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 recontouring, et cetera, and any proposed grading depicted on the approved survey. So we'd want a new, I guess, I flip it around, we want to, we want the planning department to see the new survey with the vegetation and the recontouring and the screening put in.
Yes.
Right.
And the new, and we'll get the new sanitary site plan, too.
Right.
Jim, you want to take?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I think the, the new septic system, especially being an IA new septic system, being further away from the wetlands is a real improvement on the property. We already have a scenic easement and established vegetation on the back of the property, so what we're really talking about is cleaning up the, cleaning up the front of it. That spiral staircase is actually over a slate patio, so there's really no impact there in terms of that particular variance. And so, all things considered, I was looking to approve this application.
Thank you, Tim. Roy?
I, I agree. I have nothing else to add.
Okay. Do you have anything, anything else you want to add? Okay, I agree with my fellow board members on this as well. So we all good on that, Beth? Thank you.
Terry, you got a reprieve on this one?
Yeah, one, yeah.
You got a reprieve on this.
Yeah. Goldfarb. Goldfarb, yeah.
I have the next one, too. Oh, it's yours. What were you?
I'm sorry, I pulled down, sorry. Okay, board members, I'll read in our next. We have. Okay, we have Goldfarb as the applicant, and this public hearing was on May seventh, two thousand nineteen, lot size and location is twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven square feet at one forty Barnes Hole Road, Barnes Landing, section two springs, map number three hundred dash one zero three dash five dash forty-eight point two. The description is to construct a one hundred and twenty-seven square foot second story addition and eighteen square feet foot balcony on a parcel of land containing wetlands. The relief saw it as a natural resources special permit pursuant to two fifty-five dash four dash twenty of the town code, and two variances are required for this project, two variances of forty-one point five feet and forty-one feet from two fifty-five dash four dash thirty, wetland setbacks of the town code are required to construct a second story balcony fifty-eight point five feet in addition, fifty-nine feet from wetlands where one hundred foot setbacks are required. This is in a B residence zone, the flood zone is X, and the secret class is type two, and this is in board member Delene's District Springs, Roy, if you would lead us off, please?
Right, so, um, off the bat, I'm just going to say regarding the additions on the house, I think they're minimal, they're happening over existing footprints, so I'm looking to approve this, the interesting part about this property, it all becomes about the NRSP, the pond and, and the history here, what's going on.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm going to spend, I'm going to spend most of my time talking about that.
Mm-hmm.
A little bit of the history, the subject property was part of a subdivision in nineteen seventy-eight, which was subject to the prop, was subjected the property to scenic easement. So there's a pond, and these, one big property got divided into two, and that was, the pond is split halfway between the two properties. The, uh, so the scenic easement, which was granted in nineteen eighty-one, a building permit was issued subject to a ZBA approval and determination on six twenty-two nineteen eighty-four, and the CFO was granted in nineteen eighty-six. The owner acquired the property in December of two thousand four. So since I said the additions are within the footprint of the, um, of the building, I have no problem with that, I think it's a, you know, minimum variance, has a very little, um, impact to itself, to the environment, but regarding the conditions of the existing, I have some concerns, I think the, there is a scenic easement that doesn't seem to be adhere to or, or, um, properly maintained, and I think that needs to be reestablished, prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Mm-hmm.
Interesting enough, and I don't know why he, the owner was doing this, he spent a lot of time talking about flooding of the pond, especially concentrating on the flooding earlier this spring in, in this year, um, which is kind of interesting because it just shows at the wetlands how, how dynamic they are and how they move, and it's just not, I would, I would submit that it's just not related to this spring, anytime we have rains and stuff, this pond is going to flood and, and, and things like that, it's an important pond, um, another concern that might be about the pond, I was there, I, I looked at, I looked at that pond, and he brought it up, too, he says it's an absolutely clean pond, there's no algae. To me, it was almost too clean, like it's been conditioned at some point, and he testified that the op, their neighbor had been violated for clearing out debris in the, in the pond, um, and the DEC came down and fined them thousands of dollars, right, so.
Yeah.
There's koi in this pond, there's, you know, and I, I wonder if we should take a, someone should take a closer look at what's going on with this pond, but, um, anyway, that being said, I think more importantly, from this particular property, um, the easement should be reestablished, and I think, I'm wondering if we should require a demarcation of this scenic easement zone, so this doesn't happen again.
At least with shrub, at least like shrubby.
Or a shrub, or, yeah, it could be a shrub or, yeah, let's maybe, maybe do a shrub line.
Well, that's, that's what, um, the TAM, sorry to interrupt, the TAM said, require restoration by revegetation of scenic easement by a shrubby delineation.
Right, right. The planning department could help select that species that would be able to live in these conditions, you know?
And then there was the discussions about whether or not the, about the septic system, and whether or not we should require or, or he should do a, um, IA system, he actually said that, you know, he's a, he's a, he's a professor at Columbia, and he doesn't particularly think it works, but that being said, I, I still don't think we can compel him to, to change out the system, uh, so I'm not going to offer that, but what I, what I do have, based on the, um, I think we can require, um, based on the, the proposed plans, whether or not there's additional room or not, whether or not have, get verification of the existing system, um, that it does meet the new required, the new proposed plans. So I think there should be a verification, um, process, or through an engineer, maybe through an engineer or something, to verify the existing septic system, that the, the proposed plans doesn't exceed that.
You mean the bedroom, the bedroom count, the capacity, yeah, yeah.
From a bedroom capacity count.
I will, I'll just jump in just for a sec, just to that.
Yeah.
I know there was an issue with the planning department on the separation of groundwater, I think that's why he was also pushing the applicant about the flooding, you know, now this system was, I'm sure it was approved, or it had to have been approved for a building permit, um, to occur by Suffolk County, and maybe the flood, you know, the water level has changed since, since then, then, I think it was very close, and, um, but I, I, the one good thing is the existing system is about as far away from the wetlands as B, which is great, and I, I agree with you, I'll just say this now, that I agree with you, I think to have it, as a condition, have it certified by an engineer to make sure it's meeting that capacity is.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, sorry to interrupt, go ahead, Roy.
That's it, I'm done.
Terry?
Okay, now, this house is, it's one hundred percent not non-conforming, right, to the wetlands?
Yes, yes.
And the plans do show an increase of one bedroom, I think that was part of the concern with the septic system.
Right.
Yeah, I agree, as far as the, the extension, you know, the, the variances are not outrageous, and it is over existing part of the house, it's my concern about the bedroom, an additional bedroom and the non-conforming location, but, um, I agree, I, it probably, we can't dictate it to him, he was adamant about not having one, he thinks those systems will get better in the future.
And they're not there enough.
Right.
He said they weren't there enough for it to be actively used and.
Right, and having to feed it and, and all of that, even though that will become common, but, um, okay, so now as far as the, um, the scenic easement, in the TAM, it states that the edge of clearing is within the scenic easement and should be reestablished by a revegetation with those shrubby.
Right, and that should be done prior to the issuance of a BP.
Yeah.
Right, and I don't know if we can get an additional buffer, I mean, considering that the property, the photos the applicant handed in, the property is very wet, my, my house, actually, and I'm putting in plants, but, um, if we can have him establish a, increase the buffer there, and, and do some additional planting to help mitigate these rain waters.
I think we discussed that, I don't know if we can do that now after, after the fact, but I think we did discuss that.
Yeah, but was he open to that?
No, I don't, but no, he was open, I do have a survey also, you probably know that, we do have a survey, that does show the colored in scenic easement and the sediment control fence that they're proposing to use.
Couldn't they, couldn't the planning department recommend this new, you know, what they've done out on the common in front of, um, Home Sweet Home, the bio swale that it's plants that thrive and kind of having their feet wet?
Sure, sure, that's what we do, we, exactly, when, when they come in, we will want it approved by the planning department, and exactly, they would select those kind of species.
Well, then he might not have the flooding he's having.
No, I think the flooding is a level of the pond, I don't think the plant's going to stop that.
Yeah.
Roy, you want, I mean, uh, Tim?
Yeah, um, so I'm in agreement, I, for the most part, I think the size of the project certainly is not significant or substantial, the variance is in terms of forty-one point five foot and forty-one foot from wetlands, is not insignificant, I mean, those, what, what's being done is close to the wetlands, and, and toward that, I think the, I'm in agreement that the appropriate mitigation is, uh, uh, the cleanup and the, um, uh, reestablishment of the vegetative buffer that had been previously approved. It, it's hard to look at this and not be concerned with the sort of overall property conditions.
Yeah.
From the septic, which seems a little iffy between the planning department analysis and even what he provided, the photographs, which surely, surely, uh, show a dynamic wetland that's, uh, growing at certain times of the year, um, and so, I, I'd really like to see us make sure that we fully document what we're expecting in this vegetative buffer, and that be done before the building permit.
So referencing, I think, Michael DeLalio's sketch, which you brought up, John, is regarding the sediment control fencing and the revegetation, I think we should reference that as, as what he's, needs to come into compliance with.
For sure, yeah, yeah.
It's a date on that.
And, and complying with planning department recommendations on the species and.
Yes, exactly.
And the shrubby, we all want a shrubby, so the landlord doesn't continue to keep mine.
And again, I, I'm just going to say this again, my experience, when I walked up to that pond, and when you have a bunch of koi coming up, you know, coming to you, and painted turtles swimming over to you, it means that they're being fed, it's not being treated as a natural pond, you know, so, uh, I, I'm getting a little bit concerned about that, there's nothing we can do about that, and I'm, I'm not suggesting it's him, but, um.
Counsel, I don't know if there's anything wrong, not to even relate it to this application, but to mention, a planner may want to stop and take a look down there or something, is it not really?
No.
Yeah, I mean, we can't tie it even to this application, you can't.
No, you can't, I don't think you can, I'm just making a public.
No, but that is when you, I didn't realize, you see koi coming up and painting.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Were they in the flooded?
And it's very clean.
Yeah, they're not.
Like it's being filtered.
Like it's being filtered, yeah.
Yeah.
Koi do not typically.
And Michael mentions in the TAM a number of.
But this is an assumption, it's not, there's no verification.
Yeah, but you know where the koi is, I know that.
Um, I don't have anything to add except to note that in the project rec, the TAM's recommended project conditions, it's specifically said the sanitary system shall be relocated, and so we're not adopting that particular provision.
But we are correct, but we are so far, we could just, we, we want an engineer to make sure that it's a proper system for the.
Just, when cutting and pasting, it's always good.
Sure, yes. We certainly tried, I mean, you know, it's.
Yeah.
The issue is the nexus between this scale and this.
Yeah.
So who, who does that, the building department will determine, it'll be a town engineer, town engineer.
The owner has to hire an engineer.
Oh, yes, they hire an engineer, yeah.
Like a David Rhodes type of guy, they'll verify it.
The latest survey, February twenty-first, twenty nineteen, this topography?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And that was planning documents, they didn't have that for some reason, I don't have it today.
What's that?
That was a, a planning department document, the one that shows where it should be revegetated, that's Michael's document?
This says received, I think.
Where did that come from?
I think it was Michael's because he did it.
Existing conditions report dated.
Yes.
Yeah.
Eighty-eight, April thirtieth, two thousand.
Yeah, and he took it as a PDF and wrote that text over there, yeah. Okay, I think we're, and I agree with, with my board members and, and my comments. If we're all good, board members, you good?
Mm-hmm.
Beth, we okay with that?
Do I need to move?
No, I'm good, thank you. It's a little heavier.
Well, it's got, that beach plum port thing.
Okay, okay, board members. Okay, next we have Montauk Shores, back to Terry, Montauk Shores Condominium, I'll go ahead and read this in. The, so the applicant here is Montauk Shores Condominium, condominium, the public hearing here was May seventh, two thousand nineteen, lot size and location, twenty acres, approximate total at one hundred to forest, Montauk tax map number three hundred dash thirty-two point one dash one dash two sixty-seven point one. Description, the in place and kind repair of an existing coastal erosion control structure and the repair of coastal access walkways and the platforms on a parcel of land containing coastal bluffs, beaches, entitled surface waters. The relief saw it, a natural resources special permit pursuant to section two fifty-five dash four dash twenty of the town code, zoning district is RS Resort VE Flood Zone, elevation twenty-two feet, AE Flood Zone, elevation sixteen feet and fourteen feet, and the secret class here is unlisted, and this is in board member Berger's Montauk District, if you would.
Terry?
Or Terry. You feel picked on?
It's Montauk. Okay, um, well, this is Montauk Shores Condominiums, as we know.
Wow, look at this.
Existing, all the notices. And this is an NRSP application to repair in place and in kind of some of the rock revetment that has deteriorated over time, um, the applicant was looking, in NRSP in order to do this work, the applicant was proposing to us to, well, we heard different things at the hearing, to give it in perpetuity that they could do this, and I clearly am not going to do that, uh, but then the second part of that was they do have a DEC permit that runs to twenty twenty-three, so they did submit some subsequent documentation that we had asked for, the site plan showing the elevations of the existing sand and the rock covering, revetment, and, uh, project monitoring conditions and reporting to the town on the, the, uh, project, and they wanted a multi-year approval to match the DEC permit, permit number, uh, which runs out at twenty twenty-three, and they stated some improvements that they would make to the dirt lot shoreline where that's become deteriorated on the west side of the Montauk Shores condominium property, and we got their updates, um, it's an NRSP, I am reluctant to, looking to probably approve this NRSP, but not for, not to run concurrent with the DEC permit either, I'm thinking that possibly up to two years would be a, a reasonable amount to approve the NRSP for, to give them time to, uh, do the, the rock replacements and the in-kind replacement, um, they did submit documentation on the, that we got on May thirty-first, with the areas of the, the revetment that would need to be shorn up with the existing, uh, the existing locations as, as they go across, and the site accesses that they would use, um, the equipment in the staging area that they want to use is in dirt lot, with the site access coming in from the west side. coming in from the west side. I am reluctant to deny it because I think that, you know, it is, there are a lot of homes on the site, and leaving it as is is just going to deteriorate into a worse condition. So I'm looking to approve the NRSP, and as I said, I'm thinking possibly at the maximum amount of time for two years. And as far as the reporting, I'm not exactly sure, you know, if we get a, it would be nice to get something that they're going to monitor the condition and reporting. I think they said annually, I think I would like that more frequent. And like my contractors, the builder on the board's opinion as to if this looks, it looks okay to me, the resetting of some existing stone, a hundred to a hundred fifty pounds, and placement of up to two hundred eighty tons of additional stone. I really thought that any stone that they were doing would be to replace stone that was, was lost, and not increasing the size of the revetment or the site access up at the northern edge of the rocks, that all of that would remain as is today and no further encroachment. The plan still says, if necessary, repair of wooden viewing platforms, and there really was nothing when I was at the site that indicated there was anything needed there. So I don't know if we could have that removed from it. You'll address that?
I'll address that, I'd be happy to address it.
And placement of compatible fill planted with beach grass, and they were all amenable to that, so I'm looking to approve the NRSP for a period of up to twenty-four months, and I'm curious what everyone else, everyone else feels about that.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Roy?
Yeah, so this has a bit of history, I'm not, I didn't write down all the dates, but it was, had originally had been a simple, small particle type of revetment that got revised over the years. There was conversations about, you know, Brian Frank's talking about Larry Penny had the autonomy to approve certain things. So I think if we're going to approve this, I think we have to be extremely careful of what we're doing and what we're approving and how we're doing it. I agree with member Berger, but let me bring up some things that I think are crucial to us approving this. First off, I think we should deny as a board the perpetuity request for maintenance. I just already deny it. I don't know what affair, I don't know what affair timeframe, we can discuss that. Secondly, the submissions from First Coastal that Teresa's referring to, she gave a smaller version of here, color version, have no bearing or no correlation to the discussions we had during the meeting. So my recommendation to this board is deny any of the submittals from First Coastal and refer only to the Wall Bridge survey as far as what they are allowed to do in terms of, because on the, on his submissions, he's including work scopes that were outside of the scope what was discussed with that night, as far as rebuilding up, building up
Did you want to get through some of those?
Changing the thing, the wood decks, that's not part of this application. I think if we approved, if we included any of this in, in our approval, we have essentially approved additional scope that we have no intention of approving. So I think we need to be extremely careful what we're approving here and approve only the work. Now, what is the work? The work is to replace stones that are displaced and then fill in only those areas where necessary, these are very small pockets of, that I believe were discussed that, that night. So at no point, at no point, what we are reapproving any deviation from that of the Wall Bridge survey in two thousand eighteen, and I have, we can refer to that. Survey, which is June twentieth, two thousand eighteen. So that is an existing conditions survey. That is, I think, the survey that we need to refer to at all times in perpetuity, not to ever exceed that, that requirement.
Say that date again.
There is no NRSP or request to repair decks. As a matter of fact, I think the manager of the condominium said they didn't need to at this point. So again, I, I think we have to be careful that First Coastal submission is not part of our approval.
I thought, in my mind, what we were looking for was like a longer term plan from them, how this whole thing could be mitigated to actually lessen revetment. And I don't know, maybe I just misunderstood that.
So what I'm, what I'm understanding from what was discussed that night is there is, again, I want to be, I think I want to be very clear, that there is no deviation from the existing conditions that are outlined in the Wall Bridge survey regarding the height of the bluff crest, the size of the rock. I think there, from my understanding, I mean, I don't even think, I think this work could be done by hand.
I know, they're just replacing in certain areas.
So I think we ought to restrict it to no machines, replace it by hand, and I think the work that's being done at all times must be reported prior to and after the work being Any deviation of this would really require, any proposed deviation, if we approve this, this really should go to SECR process.
Now, in the TAM, I believe Brian mentions, you know, with any sand, the, I'm sorry, I'm jumping in, I'm going to let you guys go around.
No, go.
I'll maybe chew a little bit.
Conversation right now.
Yeah, that's good, sure. We can all just chime in a little bit here. He does mention all sand, all sand cover should be revegetated with beach grass planted at twelve inch on centers in columns of three or more staggered rows. And again, Roy, I'll note, on E, this is under the project conditions, he states, it was Brian, that was Brian, yeah, states, any revetment repair should be limited to the existing dimensions and there should be no change in the elevations, length, or slope of the erosion control structures. Yeah.
And also C.
Go ahead, go ahead, Joan.
Oh, C, he says the use of cobble gravel or additional stones shall be prohibited. So he was emphasizing that.
Relocation of stone.
Right.
That's what he was emphasizing. I agree with him on this.
Right. So he was emphasizing only filling with sand, not necessarily replacing.
Relocating the little pockets, the misplaced stones.
Yeah.
With sand, so.
Not with sand.
Not with sand, with those stones.
I think we.
That's, that's my point of confusion, because when I, when I got to this, First Coastal's plan, which talks about in place and in kind, you know, replacing with stones and so forth, I got confused on whether or not we were, we were trying to freeze the situation or slowly let it dissipate.
I think, Joan, just to clarify, on C, it says any fill or cover material shall consist only of clean beach or cobble sand.
I also took a note.
And he says cobble gravel shall be.
So my question is, can fill be, there's a pocket, can you replace it with stone or only with sand?
No, I think we're, I think, my feeling, I think we're allowing them to use the stone to replace stone, or stone. I don't think, I don't think.
There are these photos that we have showing.
Exactly, right.
Specific little pockets where the fabric, the landscape fabric showing through.
That they'd be using to fill in.
And that they'd be filling in these pockets. Now, I don't know if this is the entire list of the project that they're looking to do or just an example, I think.
Before I go on, Tim, you want to, any?
I took a note, I don't know if anybody remembered hearing this, but somewhere along the line, I took a note that indicated that the DEC would not allow them to gather up existing rocks and put them back.
Yes, because we talked about, yeah, we talked about grabbing some of the ones in the sand, and you can almost see where that can take away from the benefits of this, yeah. I think I'm, I agree with all of these comments, I'll just add this, I think, Roy, as far as the hand, I like, I think most of it will be done by hand. I don't mind some equipment to bring the stone up there, I mean, it's a lot to lump all these stones up in a wheelbarrow on a sandy beach, you know.
I agree. Okay, so let's limit, how do we, how do we limit the size of the equipment? I don't think we should be having big payloaders coming.
Right, I agree. And maybe you could say it should be used with Bobcats. I think people generally know what a Bobcat, a front-end loaded Bobcat or something, you Or if they wanted to use a dumping pickup truck or something like that. Maybe Beth could wordsmith that. I think the idea is we don't want major payloaders and, you know, we're trying to keep.
Submit a protocol?
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Construction protocol?
That's a good idea, they could, with what, how they intend to transfer it. And that could be a condition.
And per the survey, the survey.
Yeah, and Roy's points, I think, are.
I just want to make a couple of comments. I wanted to start by trying to differentiate this just a little bit. You know, this, this is clearly an at-risk property, one of several that have been in front of us over the last several meetings. This one, to me, is a little different on two fronts. One is the uniqueness of the property as it relates to the vast number of people that reside there. We have two hundred manufactured homes that are sitting behind a revetment, and there's, we all know some of the issues with putting up a hard structure along the coastline, but it seems to me there's no question that now that it's there, and the history we have associated with this goes back to, I think nineteen ninety-three is when we started allowing fill to be brought in. There was another load brought in again, maybe in ninety-six, I think I wrote down, and then.
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, okay. And then finally in two thousand, what, seven, six?
Three.
Nope, four, it looks like, is when this, this rock revetment was put in. And then in two thousand seven, we had the coastal overlay district established where we would have, somebody doing this would have had to have gone through that process. So this is, on some levels, pre-existing non-conforming revetment that we're being asked to approve here.
And, and evolving, so I think we want to make sure, my point is, let's let, let it evolve again. Let's stop, let's stop.
It's about maintenance, it's about maintenance, yeah, yeah. We should talk about the time thing before we.
Yeah.
This now, too.
Yeah, and I'm a little unclear on the timing thing, that we have then the authority to not only approve the NRSP, but then approve a timeframe?
Yeah, they were asked, yes, yeah, and they were, you know, they were asking that this be, they, they.
I was understanding, I wanted it forever, but.
So realistically, is the, so was Terry saying two years, and there's a DEC goes on, it's a five-year?
Twenty twenty-three.
I have no issues with keeping it up with the DEC timeframe.
Neither do I.
I say that, I think we put a condition on it that says every time they do, the town needs to notify prior to what their plan is, and then a verification of it after.
So that's more than annual reporting?
It's not a carte blanche, go in there and maintenance.
Right, it's every, if, every time, I agree, and we could, and Beth could wordsmith that, yeah, every time they intend, say they do their pass on it this fall, after Labor Day, right, they do this first pass. And again, per, and then they want to come back next fall, they alert the planning department that they're taking place and they're, what they're doing, and it would be great to have the planners.
They're supposed to do that anyway, if they're going to stage it in the dirt lot and come across the.
Well, that.
Beach.
I'll just add this, I don't have a, personally, I don't have a problem with, I agree with Roy completely and with the TAM, where, where if they are maintaining the sand to what it always was and then planting the beach grass on top, I'm good with that. They're not trucking in and changing that slope.
I stand corrected, I'm reading the notice, and it is notice for the repair of the access walkways. So we didn't discuss those.
It was, but he did say Matt Nudelson, the manager, did say that there was nothing going to be done with the walkways.
At this time.
I think we're probably okay, if there are existing walkways and over, within the next five years or until the DEC, this runs out, if they're replacing some boards to keep that safe.
Twenty twenty-three, though, I'd like to see them do this reporting and some good faith feeling first.
I'm talking about just replacing in kind boards, if there's a rotten board, to maintain the walkway, that's what I'm.
Yeah, I agree.
I think Roy's suggestion is, I mean, we can just qualify it to say if the planning department finds that they've.
Gone beyond.
It's only in kind or in place maintenance, consistent with repairs that have taken place over the past ten to twenty years, and it's provided the dimensions, elevations, and stone armor are not increased. So if the planning department feels there's an increase, then it should come back before the zoning board. So wouldn't that be the protection that you want, Terry? Or would the planning department be able to cite them for a violation?
I don't know. I'm just wondering about, I mean, the walkways, again.
Says the details of the revetment repair are vague.
Do we need to be more specific?
Right.
Because if they're going to replace, the old walkways are done, as you know, with either CCA, ACQ material, and if they're going to replace ninety percent of the surface.
But that wouldn't be in.
We have, we have a chance, we have a chance to get up to more modern and acceptable materials.
Yeah, right.
The walkways are in excellent shape.
So I think.
It's not going to be changing.
We could condition that any repair would not, that no CCA-treated lumber could, would be used, right? And that's up to them to use hardwood or cedar or whatever they want to use, right? I think that's a very good point.
There was a comment made about SECR, but the TAM indicates repair, rehabilitation, or maintenance of an existing structure is a type-two action pursuant to SECR.
Correct, right. I think Roy was saying if they're going to be mounting up, making a new beach dune or something.
That's correct, if they're going to be changing it, I think that's going to, that's going to, I think that's why I really want to be specific.
There's one thing I didn't, I wasn't, I got the, they'd use the dirt lot for staging, and they'd make improvements.
And they were going to make improvements, so what improvements?
Well, it's, it's in the notes here.
They need to get permission to use.
Well, yeah, yeah, they have to notify the town.
The notes, the notes say, the applicant proposes to restore the dune on the eastern end of the town-owned property by adding sand, beach grass, installing a sand fence as necessary as a courtesy to the town. Additionally, the town-owned lot, beach, and subject property will be restored to pre-existing conditions following the construction. So I wasn't clear where they were doing the staging and what they were doing the rest of.
Right down here, that's the staging.
Dirt lot is on the west side of the condo.
Over there.
So what are they doing to the eastern side? They're just, they're just enhancing.
Yeah, just what you read, yeah, I think.
Okay. So can we add that as a condition?
What?
What's that?
They've offered to do this, but we want them to do it.
They need to confirm permission from the town board to do any staging on town-owned property.
I agree.
I don't think we want to do that.
But do we, they're proposing to restore the dune on the eastern end of the town-owned property, do we want them to do that or not? No, because that's beyond the scope. Okay, I talked myself.
I think, my recommendation is to deny this, this submittal as part of the approval.
Right, okay.
All right, if counsel could make note of that, sure. And again, I try, Beth will wordsmith this, and we all get to see a draft of it so that we can read it and add our own comments, you know, and so.
Yeah.
Well, we, we did say early on, we would like to see a construction protocol.
Yes.
So maybe that's part of all of this, that's how it all fits together. As currently, what currently submitted is not.
The construction protocol.
This was their construction protocol, I'm saying it's not, it's not sufficient.
They have to submit a revised one.
It's not accepted.
So we need something.
Based on information that will be provided in.
Consistent.
Based on information that will be provided in the determination, they'll then submit a new one to the board.
Right.
Yes.
And I think we should, should not allow big, you know, because he's saying there's, the equipment is going to be excavator.
Yeah.
Front-end loader, skid steer.
Right.
And I think we should limit it to a skid steer. And if they need bigger equipment for some bigger, bigger erosion, they need to come to us.
That sounds good. And again, I'm sure counsel can, can note the date of this, here, I have the big drawing of it now here. And so we should give, let's give, give that to them now. The, the first coastal submission, which is dated, received July.
Received May 31st.
Oh, is that when it was, May 31st? Okay.
That's what we got there.
And maybe, is there a date? You could, I don't have this moment. This is an older one here.
Revised date of 5/21/19.
Yeah, that's it.
Site plan, site plan.
And that's one from first.
Revised 5/21/19, yes, yes, of course.
Right, that we are not approving that, that sheet, right?
You want to make sure it's in the file? I can give you mine.
Okay, you'll keep it on top. Thank you.
Yeah, it's 5/1/2017, and we are denying the perpetuity.
We're denying the perpetuity. So you think two years?
Okay.
No, I think, yeah, I think, I think five is fine.
I mean, the, the big thing that is, it's the political. Because we have this other, we have these other revetment cases coming up, I think we really need to make sure that this one is established as unique and pre-existing and. All that.
Yeah, I wouldn't compare this to any other project. As Tim says, this is.
Unique.
You've got the verbiage for the explanation.
Counsel, good on that?
Yes.
Yep.
Glad Beth is writing the determination and not me.
I'm sure she's thrilled to be back.
Oh, by the way, we never welcomed you back officially.
Oh, you have.
I welcome.
In our own special way.
In more ways than one, right. We missed you terribly, Beth. But your department did very well pitching. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Denise, that goes in that one. Thanks. Oh, yes, one more thing I took. It's a big stack.
Oh, yes.
Okay, board members, moving along here. Okay, we have Three Beach Plum is next.
The member burger show continues.
Oh, that's Amagansett.
Amagansett, you're right. I think as soon as I heard the word beach.
Right, exactly, right, right. Okay, I'll read this into the record and then we can get going. Okay, the applicant here is Three Beach Plum LLC. Lot size and location, 41,641 square feet total at Three Beach Plum Court. Map of Beach Plum Park, number 8834 lot 2, Amagansett, tax map number 300-110-2-19.2. Description is to construct a 5,400, pardon me, 5,458 square foot two-story residence with a 3,859 square foot and approximately 1,805 square feet of first and second story decking, a swimming pool, sanitary system on a parcel of land containing freshwater wetlands and beach vegetation. The relief sought here is a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255-4-20 and variances from 255-4-40 minimum wetland setbacks and 255-11-10, Table 3 of the Town Code, and any other relief necessary. Variances of 21.4 feet and 25 feet are required to construct the residence and decking 78.6 feet and 75 feet respectively from the wetlands, and a variance of 5.5 feet is required to allow the residence to extend approximately 30.5 feet above natural grade where 25 feet is the maximum height permitted for a flat roof structure. This is in an A2 residence, AE flood zone, elevation 10, and the secret class is type-two. And this is in Amagansett District, so I'll start us off there. Board members, I have here, I believe the most current survey is revised April 9th, 2019. If you all have that. And as well, we have a construction protocol that was presented from an associate's dated May 7th, 2019 for this project. You all recall the hearing, I'm sure, had quite a bit of discussion on, on this application, and as well on the, on the variance for the height. Just wanted to grab the TAM here.
I'll look at this.
Could I thank you? Thanks, Tim, sorry. So this, this property, I'll say this, I'm leaning to, to approve this application for the following reasons. The, I think the applicants have worked hard. First of all, it's a, we all know it's a very large residence, I mean, a property there, 41,000 square feet, and I think we all know this area very well. It's absolutely spectacular. Dune, vegetation and dune lands there along the ocean. I think, what I, what I appreciate here is that the applicants have cited this house as basically as close as they physically can away from, to, to the, to the west where there is a neighbor there, as far away as they can from the wetlands here. I think they've kept a very dense and yet realistic construction envelope, and we see, that goes with their construction protocol, which I felt was, was thorough enough and, and gives you a proper sense of how they intend to do this work. As well, just the way the house was designed and cited where all of the activity is pretty much taking, taken along the south and the western property line. I think there was some comment about some of the wetlands, you recall, there, there are these pocket, you know, these kind of pocket wetlands that are forming from those pockets. They're valuable, some, some have a lot more value than others. And with regard to the, with regard to the variance for the height variance, you know, this board, we all take a very tough look at any height variances. What I find here that makes this unique in my mind is the severe topography that's, that's here. And if you recall, on the building plans, yeah, I was going to say, thank you for pointing that out, on the building plans, if you recall, in the cross-sections, there are some areas that, that, a small, small area that does conform to it. The applicants also did presentation drawings where they showed how they could make it conform to, Roy, I believe it's 32 feet with the pitch roof?
Yeah, and it was, and it was actually a more massing.
Exactly, exactly.
Massing to it.
Exactly right. And I just.
And not in keeping with the neighborhood flattened roof.
Yeah, yeah. So it sounds like we all appreciated that, that bit of presentation work there, because I think it really, it's, you know, a picture tells a thousand words, and, and I agree. I think it was more, more massive with, with the gabled roof. As well as Joan notes here, or as the, received May 1st, as well, they have an aerial with the heights of these other neighboring structures. Now, again, you know, it's tough to say how exact all of these numbers are, because there are so many variables. You really have to go into all of the files and, and they, I'm sure they did pull the files, but as you know, the building department, the building inspector takes the height of a building from the, the occurrence, the instance where it is occurring, depending on where that portion of the roof is going up to 25 feet or beyond, dropping, sort of dropping a plum bob down or going close to the sidewall, going down to the existing natural grade without any fill. So some of these things are kind of probably tricky to interpolate, but nonetheless, this graphic does show that, that some of the other neighbors are at 37.5, 37.9, 37.6, 34.5, 33.9, and 43.8. So I'm sure there's a little bit less, there isn't a pole, there's a bit of a, a variable there, but their point is well-taken. All of these lots are also as far as, you know, they're, they're quite a ways off the highway. I, I think the perception there is not too, is fortunately, you have that lovely dune land between the highway and these structures. So, but basically, I just feel, what I like about this is I think they just really worked hard on it. I think they know what the planning, zoning board is looking for, and, and they tried to cite things and, and design it in that way. And I'll let, Tim has some things highlighted here that maybe, Tim, I'll let you go through it with your own notes and not try to, so we're not repeating that. But let's go around the table and we, and speaking of which, Tim, would you want to start us off next, Tim? Would you?
Sure.
Great, thank you.
So I guess I would add that this was originally in front of us, meaning this board, back in February of 2018. And the first go-around, the planning department pretty strenuously objected to a number of things. And as currently presented, it was the planning department's commentary that they really had no concerns with regard to the NRSP request, and that they had minimal concerns associated with the two variances to the wetlands. So really, the, the thing that I think we have to focus on is the height variance. It should also be noted that 69% of this property is going to be in scenic easement.
And only 14% of the lot's going to be cleared.
Is only going to be cleared at the end. They do, in terms of the height, lose six feet because of the FEMA regulations. So it's a two-story home, admittedly, I think the first floor is like 11 feet high, I mean, it's a, but it's, it's not out of character. The fact that they lose six feet to FEMA is impactful, and when you look at the overall analysis in terms of the way that the land flows here, I think the, the overall height is in keeping with the other homes in the neighborhood. And as noted earlier, which seems crazy to a layperson, but they could build a conforming house with a gabled roof, and it would be substantially higher. And so this is actually, in the overall perspective of that, I think, a, a better, a better rendering. And so for all of those reasons, I, I believe that this was a very thoughtfully presented application, and I would be looking to approve it.
Thank you, Tim. Joan?
Tim highlighted the two things that I thought they had made significant improvements in the property, you know, dedicating almost 69% of the property to scenic easement, which is the largest of the block, of all the other blocks in the Beach Plum area. And I also think they were sort of thoughtful in their construction, because they're using pre-cast dry wells, and they're bringing in steel frames that eliminate concrete pillars. They're not going to have onsite construction trailers. One thing that was a little worrisome was a neighbor had complained, and she basically, her basic complaint was that the purchasers knew what the constraints were at the time of purchase. But I don't really see how her complaint, I mean, they knew what the constraints were, and that's why they've applied to the zoning board. So I'm not sure what to do with her complaint. I mean, we can acknowledge her complaint. It would appear she just doesn't want something to be built to one side of her property.
Right, we don't have to acknowledge it's part of the, I mean, yeah, it's part of the public record.
Yeah. That was it. Otherwise, I agree with what everyone said.
Okay, thanks, Joan. Roy?
I agree. What's important for me on this one is differences, which I'll highlight a little bit more, too. The differences between the first application and the second one. The first application, the houses, the, the house and everything, were actually encroaching on some of the pristine dunes to the east, southeast of this, which, by the way, I agree, is some of the most pristine dune, dune and dune land we have out here. But the team, they came back with an application that I think is, is, we could be proud of approving in this one. And I, and I think, you know, we already mentioned that 69% of the property will be in a scenic easement, and 14% will be cleared. Some of the other changes they've made relative to the first application was, the driveway was, was revised and made smaller, and they eliminated the retaining wall. The gate in the walkway was removed. The clearing was revised and tightened up greatly. The grading and fill minimized, will, they will reuse, store and reuse the existing on, on site.
Right, with the cedum, yeah.
The dry wells were brought within the, the structure underneath, I think, that carport, so it's traffic bearing, which also reduced the clearing, very smart, I think, to do. There will be no lawn assad. The architectural changes, the second floor was decreased by 604 square feet. The decks were decreased by 814 feet, and the coverage was decreased by 550 feet. So I think this is a much better application, and I, and I definitely am pleased to want to approve this, and I agree with your reasonings for the height variance.
Thank you, Roy. Terry?
Well, I'm in agreement with everybody, and I had some of the numbers I was going to read off there. Roy just read from this nice diagram from 2018 to the latest application, portions that they removed, and also the scenic easement being the largest percentage of the lot. Some of the other lots are larger, but in those that are near the site, including the, the neighbor's house that did come in, the properties are pretty much very close in, in total area, and there's the clearing revegetation that will leave, revegetation will bring to the 16% of the lot, the smallest, smallest clearing after revegetation of all six lots in this, this community. And the initial clearing is 31% of the lot, which is also the smallest of, of any of the others. You can't really compare it to one Beach Plum, because that property was 67,000 square feet.
Yeah.
Put to some of the other properties, it's, it's a very good number. And I feel I'm looking to approve this. I think they did an excellent job at the redo since February 2018.
Thank you, Terry. Any other comments, board members? Nope? No? You're good? Beth? Thank you. Okay. Okay, how are we doing, board members? Okay, how are we doing, board members? Wow, we're almost there, okay, good, good.
Keep going.
Okay, we have, are we okay doing the last two? Board members, you're good with that? Good. Great. So, I will read the next one into the record. We're back in Montauk, Terry.
Yeah, give me a second, I'm wrapping up.
Yeah, take it, take it, take your time.
Give her a little break.
Take, take your time, I'll just start reading in and getting the file out together. No rush. The applicant here is 391 East Lake LLC. The lot size and location, 73,269 square feet total, at 391 East Lake Drive, map number 6595, map of Indian Rills. Is that supposed to be hills?
No, it's Rills.
Oh, it is, okay, good, good, my bad. Describe, describe property and lot number five, Montauk, tax map number 300-7-3-5. The description, "To demolish an existing residence and construct an approximately 4,300 square foot two-story residence, swimming pool, decking and detached garage, and a sanitary system on a parcel containing tidal wetlands and surface waters. The release sought here is a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255-4-20 of the town code and any other relief necessary. The closest structure and the sanitary system have been proposed 100 feet and 201 feet respectively from the wetland boundary." This is, the zoning district here is an A resident zone, flood zones are AE flood zones elevation five and six feet, and X flood zone, and the secret class is type two. And again, this is a board member Berger's district. Terry, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, okay, this is in a harbor protection and coastal erosion overlay district number two, zone two. This is, I know the planning department had worked on this with the owner, the owner apparently purchased this property around 2016, and the, the planning department was pretty much in favor, as it, it's a good application. This property adjoins on the southern part, this adjoins town property where there is a shell fishing area, and it's across from Little Reed Pond on East Lake Drive, it's in the northern portion of East Lake Drive. Looking at a survey dated January 31st, 2019, to make sure that is the latest.
Yes.
And, so I am looking to approve this application, there is one issue with the property, and as we saw in the photos, here, but as we saw in the photos of it, there is what is kind of a, a rock revetment, I'll call it a revetment, it's a, a number of rocks that were put at the top of the bluff there, and, and onto the face of the, the property. It clearly was not done naturally by Mother Nature, we can see on the, it must have been placed there over time. So it's the one sticky point on the project, and I'm looking to approve the project, however, that the, this, these rocks have to go away, and there was discussion at the hearing with the planning department, and with the agent, as to how that should be done. Planning department's recommending that they be hand removed.
Yeah.
And to what extent, I guess, we're still in question, so I wonder if we could get a, a more detailed plan from the applicant's agent for, for planning to approve.
Yeah, I was going to say, if, if we, just to jump, jump in, if we did approve it, perhaps we'd, we'd all feel good with having it inspected before building permit, and having it inspected by the planning department.
Have them remove that before.
So that they see that it goes down. I think we talked about that natural inclination.
I think they were receipt, they were also seeking a definition of what to remove and what to leave.
Yeah.
Because there's, there's larger rocks and there's smaller, smaller rocks.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you could see it, but it.
I don't know enough about that.
If you look at the adjacent land to the north and the south.
I think.
Well, the TAM refers to naturalizing it, I think, to Terry's point, exactly.
And this whole wall is not naturalized at all.
Yes.
The property to the south has just a sandy beach area.
My point is, if they can come to agreement with the planning board.
Yeah.
The planning department.
Right.
The planning department.
Right.
Excuse me, I think, I'll be all right with that.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, I didn't attend the hearing, but I did watch the hearing on LTV.
Great, thank you.
And reviewed the file and notes, and because I just watched it, it's fresh.
Good, please.
And the reason why we're all struggling is that Brian Frank even used the words that he was struggling.
Yeah.
With exactly what it meant to naturalize it. So there was a lot of conversation about whether they, rocks could be removed by hand, how much they weighed. There was back and forth on that. You know, so, that was the question I had when I got done.
Yeah.
Watching this, was that it was clear that the, the project seemed to be a, a project everybody was comfortable with, and it was also clear that there was an acceptance that there needed to be an improvement on this rock revetment, but exactly what that meant was not fully defined.
Right, do you recall, I recall, and you watched it more recently than, that, again, I, I believe I had, I had suggested that, again, you see these pictures here, board members, you know, there's a natural, you can see where it certainly raises up, you know where they've done it, and it shows up on the survey, but if we maintain in the planning department, this is what I'd be comfortable with, and the planning department inspected, that they, they, they go back to the natural inclination from the, from the shore up the existing beach to, you know, to take off that, right now it's got, it comes up and goes up like this, right?
Almost like, almost like the face.
Yeah, like, exactly. And if they just took it down to that natural topography, I'd be fine with that.
And he did, he did want them to hand remove.
And hand remove, and I think we're all good with that.
He was fine with that, too.
Yeah, Joel indicated they were willing to remove it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can run around. Jim, do you have any more, while you, any more? How much, Tim, you want?
No, I, I felt like the, I wanted to approve the project, but that we needed to clean up this, exactly what we were looking for.
Great, thank you. Joan?
I don't have anything to add, except that the project conditions are very comprehensive, and make a point of saying that a revegetation plan has to be issued, because one hadn't been submitted.
Yeah, yeah. I think we all.
That we can allow that to be submitted to the planning department.
Mm-hmm.
So that we don't have to see this again.
And condition E talks about that rock revetment.
Right. But that also, it also, thank you, Terry, it also said, it to, it has to be naturalized to the satisfaction of the board, maybe we could modify that to say, to the satisfaction of the planning department pursuant to our guidelines.
And to a site inspection.
And a site inspection.
Yeah, I agree, that's a good point.
Yeah.
You agree all?
I think our guidelines are clear, but they may be clear as mud. Beth? You know, it makes sense what we're talking about.
Yeah, I'll write something up, and then you guys can look at it and see.
I know, Terry, did you mention the revegetation on this?
There, there is revegetation. Well, we didn't get it.
We didn't get it.
We don't want to make that a condition.
Yeah, I mean, it, we're going from 20,300 square feet of existing clearing to 13,250 proposed, so that's a big, a big part of this application.
It's, it's a mixed bag what's out there now, and a lot of just overgrown stuff, grass.
Yeah, Tim, I always.
Certainly not by a plan.
I agree, Tim, I was going to mention the same, that certainly, they, I think they did a very thorough job with that, and you can see they're coming in pretty tightly to the building, which is realistic.
I mean, but they, the TAM refers to the limits of clearing, the limit is 13,261, meaning they can't go below that, to stay complience with the harbor protection overlay.
Right. You can't go over, right.
What they were asking for was. Is it in this survey, right, January 31st?
Yes.
That's the one I had.
Right, right. And again, just for the record, the clearing, actually, I'm looking for the clearing here.
Top left.
Top on the top.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I lost it last time, thanks, Tim. Right. And as well, Joan, just to reiterate, that I'm sure council will, we, we certainly want to include all, all of these project recommendations.
Yeah.
With that one change from the board to the planning department, recommended project conditions.
Well, the other, that, that the revegetation plan can go to the planning department.
Exactly, I said, with, with that, with that change, yes, yes, and, and.
And the change.
And also the inspection, the inspection by the planning department.
And the change about the rock revetment.
The rock revetment, yeah.
I know, I'm sure Beth has all that, yeah, she's got that.
So actually, with the revegetation, they're coming in for compliance.
Yeah.
It's all good.
Any other comments, board members? You all good?
Nope.
Okay, we good, Beth, right? Thank you, Beth, good. Okay. Well, we're pretty much getting up to date here. We are now up to our hearing last week. Okay, I'll read this into the record. You okay?
It's there.
Yeah. You have a cough drop? You do good. Okay, I'll read this in, here, the applicants are Carolyn and Michael Smith, lot size and location is 19,950 square feet at 22 Robbins Way, section number five of Barnes Landing, file 10241957 in Springs, tax map number 300-103-6-19. Description to construct 670 square feet of addition, 654 square feet of first and second floor decking, 448 square feet, square foot pool, 30 square foot outdoor shower, sanitary system, fencing and cellarway, and to allow fencing to remain within town's jurisdiction of freshwater wetlands. The release sought here is a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255-420 of the town code, and seven variances are required for this project. Variances of 18 feet, 19 feet, 29 feet, 29 feet, 31 feet, and 51 feet from 255-4-30 wetland setbacks are required to construct the additions, covered porch, decking, pool, cellarway, and fencing, 82 feet, 81 feet, 71 feet, 71 feet, 69 feet, and 49 feet respectively from wetlands where 100-foot setbacks is required. One variance of 65 feet from 255-4-30 wetland setbacks are required to allow existing fencing to remain 35 feet from the wetlands where 100-foot setback is required and any other relief necessary. The zoning district is B resident zone, the flood zone is X, and the secret class is type two, and this is not in Terry's district, this is in board member Julian's district.
Yes, if you don't mind handing me a bigger survey.
Sure, sure, yeah, yeah.
I forgot my glasses.
Here's a big, here's the, for one, Roy, if you'd like. And here's a survey, anyone else need a survey or anything?
Yeah.
Actually, we only have.
Yeah, we were short on them, Mr. Ryan.
Here's another larger survey here, you can hand that back to me, I'll check.
Is there one?
That's the same, I gave one to Roy.
Oh, the big one?
Yeah.
Share that.
Joan, was this the only one? There you go. I have a smaller one, I can waste some more.
Okay.
Okay. Any one?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So Mr. Chairman, the wet, this property is requesting some additions to the house and the swimming pool, and want to talk, the wetlands that are associated with this property are between the property and quality row. These wetlands are important wetlands for a number of reasons, there are some very rare, I guess, plantings. I, I don't remember, Michael mentioned one of them, it's something, I think the last was something raisin. It was a rare orchid, but there's something called something raisin, too.
Northern wild raisin.
Northern wild raisin is.
Oh, yes.
So, and, and he pointed out that in Brian's tenure, he's only seen two of them, so some rare foliage here.
Yeah.
But more importantly, these wetlands also drain and fall, flow down towards and into Fresh Pond. Fresh Pond is a, a troubled body of water shut down to public use and whatnot, so I think we need to take a look at, you know, treat these wetlands as important wetlands.
Yes.
So the application is proposing to do some additions. The additions of itself are, are minor, and I have no issues with the additions proposed. There is a, there is a proposed swimming pool, and as a result of where the pool is going, they're, they need to relocate the septic, and they are upgrading, they're bringing in IA system to upgrade the septic system as well, relocate it and upgrade it. There are more, most importantly, there are issues with the clearing on this property as well. And I think the survey that is submitted, and as per the TAM, it seems to be unclear by the survey whether the clearing is truly depicted properly on this, which we don't believe it is, I think there are, are some landscape, and it doesn't fit the, the actual town's definition of clearing, so we're going to want that cleaned up. And we discussed the addition of a buffer along the, the side of the property that is towards the wetlands.
The wetland edge.
Of a 10-foot buffer being added along the entire length of that property.
And they were fine with that, I believe, correct? They were fine with that, I believe?
Yeah, they were fine with it. So I want to, I, I think the most important thing here is to, is to make sure that the revegetation and clearing is consistent with the town's planning department, and, and to add the additional clearing to the buffer. I think that is adequate, in this case, adequate mitigation for the proposed in-ground pool, although we can't consider the septic as mitigation, because it's necessary to be relocated, so it's a sort of a self-created factor there, but the, I think, it is, it is a, an important environmental improvement on the property, so I would, I would be looking to approve this with the addition of the buffer along the wetland side of the property, and make sure that the, the other remaining clearing limits are properly revegetated.
Thank you, Roy. I think I have to note, I might have handed you an older survey, because when I'm looking at it, this one.
We have, let's look at this survey. Because I'm on February 11th.
Well, you're sorting that out.
Because the, the older survey did not show, the one I handed off was, did not show the swimming pool. No, no, it's not, let's see.
Oh, yeah, I don't see.
This one does, this one is February, February 11th, 2019.
Oh, that one does, okay, because this one here.
It shows the swimming pool. We discussed maybe the fact that the swimming pool can move closer to the house, but that doesn't affect the setback to the wetlands.
It doesn't.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, the planner did suggest that, though, as a possibility to get some, mitigate some clearing.
Would, would it actually be 329?
In my notes, I have, we closed the hearing subject to getting a revegetation plan, adding that 10-foot buffer next to the wetland edge, and consideration of moving the pool to improve the clearance numbers.
Right.
And that was suggested in the TAM, which said the clearing needed for the pool and equipment could be decreased if the pool were constructed closer to the attached or existing deck on the lot.
Right, so how much?
And, yeah, we discussed, well, we can go around the room, I won't, go, why don't you finish off, Joan, and then we'll go around the room.
That's really.
Well, were we, were we waiting for resubmission then, based on?
I don't recall thinking, since it was parallel, I didn't feel that was such a major deal myself.
Yeah, I think it's a small gain. Yeah, I think it's a small gain. I think the buffer is a much bigger...
Yeah, I don't, I had a feeling at the end, we were, I don't know, personally, I was okay where it was considering, you know? Because it's just moving in parallel.
We were more concerned about the type of vegetation they were doing, whether they had a full understanding of what that meant.
And they seemed very amenable to all of that and working with the planning department, as I recall.
They were very open to whatever was suggested.
Yes.
And I don't see, it may not be a major thing, but I don't think it could hurt to have them move the pool and attach it to the existing deck.
I forgot one...
As well as the buffer and everything.
I forgot one major issue, and that is the compliance of the gates and the fence.
The ARB approval for fences and gates.
That has to come into town compliance.
Right, right.
Because that's not in the...
And they, they too are going to decide, I think, if they either shorten it or go to the ARB.
The reason I'm, I'll just jump in for a second. Terry, the reason I'm okay with leaving the pool where it was, if you look, the pool itself is only, the water is only 7.9 feet away from the deck. And then they've got this small kind of, you know, at-grade patio around the pool.
So, maybe we decided it wasn't, wouldn't be a great gain.
And then there's only steps. Then there's just a little bit of room for the steps going up to the deck. You know what I mean? So, as far as coming down the stairs the way it is right now, you're immediately on the pool patio, basically. And again, the fact that it's just parallel to these, these wetlands, that's...
Just for Beth's sake, the gate, which was eight feet, and the fencing aren't mentioned in the project conditions?
I got them. I put it down.
Yeah, because Roy, Roy, I believe you brought that up in your, in your... Tim, you want to take a, your comments, Tim?
I think we've had a good exchange here, and I'm in complete agreement with Member Delian's assessment on this one.
Mm-hmm, okay. Terry, anything else?
No. Yeah, the pools are tremendous.
You're not going to gain much.
And it's, obviously, it's great getting this new IA system there with going to fresh pond, Roy, right? You know?
I think that's the definite...
That, that in the buffer is a nice thing.
Yep.
Are we good, counsel?
We are good.
Back to the file. Thanks.
I'm going to admit, I did not see the minutes.
They're not done.
I'm glad that I admitted such.
They weren't there? No, because I didn't finish them.
Oh, I looked early this morning. I didn't know if you put them there later.
I'm just finishing them up.
Keeping us on our toes, are we?
Any resolutions?
That was a test, actually.
So, we'll do the minutes next week?
Yes.
And counsel, do you have any resolutions?
Yes.
We do have a few, yeah.
Two resolutions and one modification.
Yeah.
The modification is for the foley application, board adopted recently. I guess there was a scenic easement condition that was not meant to be put in, in there. There was a condition of, a condition of the approval was to require a scenic easement, and that was not meant to be in there.
It wasn't?
Wasn't?
We didn't ask for a scenic easement? Or there wasn't one there?
I don't know. We'd have to look at the file. I don't remember.
Didn't they have a little patio and stuff in a scenic easement that they were going to remove?
I don't remember.
There was some sort of gazebo or something?
Perhaps we should take a look before.
Sure. And then the other, Markowski and Vargas. Did we see this?
Yeah, you mind, Roy?
I'm just delivering these, so I'm not...
And was foley out in Montauk?
No, foley was...
Do you have the files?
Foley is yours.
Three Mile Harbor Drive or something.
Peloton guy.
Yeah, Peloton.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll take the files.
I don't remember a scenic easement either. Yeah, we can...
I don't remember one where...
The point is, I'll own it, send it to my area.
Yeah.
So, I'll do the research on it.
Okay, all right. So, Tim's going to take a look at foley for us. Thank you, Tim. Okay, so, we have two here. This is a determination in Terry's district for Brian Markowski. And Terry, I'll hand that off to you, please.
Okay, this was out in Dix Plains. Brisbane, Brisbane Road, one of those B roads. And this was to construct 435 square feet of new first and second-story decking, renovate some existing decking, expand a pea gravel driveway, and put some bluestone paved pathway on a parcel within 150 feet from the wetlands. There was an NRSP and a variance of 15 feet for the proposed deck, relocated 85 feet from the wetlands. And this was the unanimous approval by the board. So, in the matter of Brian Markowski, tax map 300-31-03-2.8, I make a motion to approve the determination as written.
Second.
Concur.
And I concur. Thanks, Terry. Okay, our last one here is in my district. I'll read this in. This is a determination in the matter of the application of Alexandra and Bernal Vargas, tax map number 300-128-1-19.2. And this is at 336 Cranberry Hole Road in Amcansett. And board members should recall that this application came to us one time and was denied. And the applicants came back, and I believe we all agreed, I think we all, I mean, I know we, they did a very good job at their second pass and listened to the board and scaled things back, and I think pretty much did, made the right, made the right decisions, design decisions all along. And this was approved, we all concurred unanimously on this. So, I will make a motion in the matter of Alexandra and Bernal Vargas at 336 Cranberry Hole Road to approve the application.
Second.
Thank you.
Concur.
Concur.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, anything else?
Were we going to have an exec session?
I think we were, yeah.
So, therefore, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to adjourn the Town of East Hampton Zoning Board of Appeals hearing, work session, and June 11th.
Yep.
Second.
At 8:47 PM and go into executive session.
Second again.
Concur.
And I concur. Thanks. Thanks, Alenny. Have a good night.
Thank you.